Firstly, any apologies for absence?
Being received from councillors Brindle, Evans, Harvey, Jeremy and Baretto.
Thank you, Cara. To disclose of any disclosable pecuniary interest, I'll get it right. No, not at all. Thank you. Okay, 15425 minutes of the planning committee to confirm the committee meetings on the 8th of July 25 or true record. Do you have a signature on that piece of paper? Somebody quite happy with those minutes, by the way. Okay, and into the planning proper. So 15425, a plan application to consider. Mark, are you there?
Yes, receiving you. I can, I can just about hear you. So to begin with sturdy close then?
Yes, please.
Yeah. So 31 sturdy close showing with the blue outline on your plan there. It's, it's worth noting at this point, it's a corner plot which will become quite significant as we actually look at the plan. So if we scroll down to the next map, more slightly more detail. So the red plot is the new development, but the blue plot next door is the immediate neighbours and existing house, which is also, as I said, becomes significant when you look at the application. So if we go on to the next place, please, um, here is a view of the site as it exists. And the yellow, the yellow circled there is the, when you come to look at future plans, that's marked as sunroom. And if you look to the far left of that picture, there are some garages there, which again are just worth noting in order to orientate yourself when you see the rest of it. You'll notice on the right hand side there are the front doors of the existing house and the neighbour's house. But the, yeah, your, the cursor there is hovering over the front door of that house in effect. So although that isn't strictly picking on the front, it is the main entrance to that house. And you can see, as I said, entrances to the other ones that are part of that terrace a bit further along the right. So if we move down to the next one, which again just shows that in more detail. So that's the existing situation. You'll notice the blue pot, as I said, the existing house with that piece on the side there, which has got its entrance on the left of the plan as we look at it. And that shows the new house that's proposed for that corner plot. And you'll notice that the roof is in the other direction to the existing terrace. So at right angles to it in effect. And also worth noting at this point that that garden wall that you can see, well, you did see in the photo before is going. And that green area is a green roof. And also note that the, that red block includes the garage. So that new house, 31A, will have that garage as part of its plot. And the blue plot, the existing building, will therefore be not having a garage from now on. So if we move on to the next picture. So this shows in a bit more detail the existing situation. So again, I've marked on there with the yellow ovals, the sunroom, as I said, the bit that sticks out from the existing extension and the aforementioned garage. So that's the existing arrangements with that square wall enclosing a sort of, well, walls enclosed garden. And the outside that is where you saw all that kind of slate, purply slate around the sort of between that garden enclosed bit and the road. So if we now look at the, the next bit down, again, that, that development plot being shown in red there. And this shows the plan of the new building, which will be 31A, as it says, which will have that, as you'll see, the roof in, as I said, it pitched in the right angles to the existing terrace. And there's a flat roofed area around it, which will have a green roof, a cedem roof, which is, will again be quite significant when you see a little bit later. But it also includes more of a green porous surface garden and replacing that sort of slate covered area as is existing. Okay, if we go on to the next one. So again, you've got your sort of before and after situation here. This one showing the upstairs rooms there, the bedrooms. And if we could just go down to the next one. So again, it will be a two storey building. You can see the green roof shown there, that'll be a flat roof, just of the ground on the, on top of the ground floor in fact. And you can see the, the bedrooms, as I say, in the new house there. And if we go down to the next one. So again, existing situation. And again, it highlights there the fall of the roof going sort of left to right as existing. And then sort of up and down as we look at it now with a, with a roof light on the new proposed building. Okay, we could, and again, note the little bit on the side of the existing 31 sturdy close there. And it's worth also noting now, I think 32 is that next one, which again will come up in, in previous plans. So the one at the bottom, to the right of it, as you were looking at those front doors on that original photo, would be 32. Okay, so if we go on to the next plan, please. So these are the east side. Now, this view is a view that nobody would really have. It's sort of looking from behind those buildings and through 31, which is marked on the red outline there, towards the new house and the garages. So it's looking sort of from behind the road, through the existing houses towards the new proposed development. And so we'll, as I said, because that's sort of not the most useful, I think if we move on to the next one. Thanks, folks. And you'll see, so this is the west side. So this would be looking from the road. Remember those garages were on the far left of our picture and then there was those, that sunroom on the side of number 31 as existing. And the proposed change there shows the, so the, the green steel cladding pitch roof going in, well, as the direction as you can see, which is not the same as the existing ones behind it. So that red line shows existing ones. And you can see again, the proposed walls there of the other brick match original. And you can see the, the flat roof of the lower part of that new building in the front there. Just marked with a couple of little wibbly green lines there, the cedem roof. So it's probably again clearer if we move on to the next bit. So I'm afraid for some reason, your, your, your version of the document's got those numbers cut off from them. But just to clarify things, I've, I've allocated that, that west one is a jaunty angle because it shows the sort of angle you'd have to look at it to get the west elevation with the garages on the left and the sunroof in front of you. And similarly, the front, that front label is marked that direction for a reason because that's looking at the front elevation, which we're going to see in a minute. So 31A will be the new house, which will be situated where it says 31A or, you know, where the existing sort of walled garden and slate is. The next one on the right with marked over the door, oh, thank you, Alan, that's going to be, that will be 31. So 31 actually goes from that door and has the windows to the right of it. And then you've got 32 with that front door and then 33 further on. So if we now look at the, I think we've got the front and rear elevations next, yeah. So we've got the front elevation there, which is basically pretty much the direction you're looking from up above with the front door of 32 at its front and the front door of 31 on its side there. And at the bottom of your picture there, the new 31A proposed development. And as I said, with, you see the bin store at the front there, green cladding, the green roof and the yellow brick walls around it there. And if we see the rear elevation as well, again, existing view, looking at the sort of, looking from behind those buildings. And yes, you get to see the green roof in all its glory there with the textured brick there, green roof. Some of the aluminium frame windows. And that will be, as I said, a button on to the little side bit of 31 as it exists. Okay, I think we've got one more little bit on this. So the materials and finishes to be used, as I said, yellow, yellow bricks to match. And there's a green steel cladding for the roof, triple glazed windows and doors and solar or LED lighting. And as I said, the cedem roof is quite a significant feature of this property. And it's, I think, is mentioned in the next bit. We've got a little bit from the biodiversity net game, which I'm surprised they've had to do, but it is, it does, it is quite interesting in the way this system works now. You can see the before pictures at the top there. It's got all of the four things. So it's got at the moment, a relatively small area of actual green garden and that slate area outside it. It's, I'm afraid the small print may be very difficult for you to read, certainly is for me. But it's basically, I think if you look at the, I tried to pick out the key points in that bit of text there. So they're only actually losing a very small amount of existing sort of green garden, but they're creating quite a large new area of greenery, including a significant area of flat roofs. So there'll be less non-permeable surfaces, i.e. the things that water runs off from and potentially contributes to flooding. And so there will definitely be actually quite a significant biodiversity net gain on the site as well as for us. But so back to you, Chair.
Thank you very much. They're quite comprehensive. And actually, for once, the, the drawings are quite comprehensive as well. And they do make it quite clear to me. I'll open it up to the floor. Any comments, please? We'll start with Matt Stewart.
We once spent quite a while debating on someone putting up a one storey granny annex in their garden. This is a three bedroom, for all intents and purposes detached, house in their garden. This feels incredibly extreme, like I've got a very large garden, I'll build a house in it. I don't know how I feel about it. I, I don't know. It's great that the biodiversity parts there, but I read as well, you know, harvesting water, harvesting water and a native cedem green roof. Outside of that, for me, it's just, we've got a big garden, let's whack a house in it. It's. Also, why is it green? I'm not the only one thinking, why do they want to build a greenhouse? And then outside of that, why is it got, it's taller than the current house? According to these drawings, it will point out taller than it. I don't know what objections we can form from that, but overcrowding or improper use of one's garden, I don't know. But we, we really struggled and but came to the consensus with an aging population. We understand granny annexes in the gardens are going to become more common. This is way above a granny annex. This is, have we been told as well? Purpose? What? Are they building it and someone's going to live there? Are they selling it on? Are they? I don't know if we, maybe we can, as a councillor can make a decision without knowing what the ultimate goal of said built property is going to be. If it's going to be then sold on, I strongly doubt it. If it's HMO, we're sure they're going to need to know something like that.
And I think one of the things that's very difficult for us to do is work out the intentions of the owners. Because whatever is stated within intentions can be changed quite quickly. And what we can do is comment on the, the structure and the improper level on the community rather than the individual's intention. So I think that's probably where we'd end up. You okay with that, Stuart? And then?
I think that's touching on what before you've moved through, it smacks a bit of overdevelopment. Where we've got front gardens, they're lost. I think you changed the, the nature of a state. They're not very much for front gardens not having massive fences. So you do have that open field as you go around. Albeit half of this garden is falling now anyway. And obviously the garden they have there is all to stones, but that's their personal choice of having stones. So they could have some grass, they could have some plants, they could have that. Like you, Matt, we've got to think, what can we object or hang our hat on? Overdevelopment is one thing. The loss of a car parking stroke garage space on the existing building. But as I read it, there will be no garages with the old house. And the new, the other garage will go across to the, the new building. So you mean to have a on-street parking from the existing house down, which will give us, again, parking issues, which we know is always to the fore. I'm wondering about sightlines of coming out of the driveway at that concept as well, because we're building right out. There was an image there where you could see quite clearly down the road. If you're coming out of that close, then you will have to poke your nose all the way out to, to see round. Colour scheme, interesting. We're not on a consummation area there. So we can, you know, be a bit more open to ideas. Whether that's appropriate there, I'm not really bought on the idea of a green steel cage. I think green roofs, yeah, was a good idea. But saying your footprint loss of the new house go there means your drainage means you will have to eat notes on slate that would be able to permeate through the water as it is now. So I'm pretty much against it.
Thank you. Annie?
Yeah, I think the same as everybody. I would say it's the wrong way round for start because all the, the houses next to it don't go that way and this is going that way. It's taller than the other houses, which I think the planning committee, Breton, will pick up on because it's not, it's not in keeping with the rest of the housing in the area. And also, I mean, I don't get the green either, the steel clad. I don't understand how that's in keeping with what's around it or anything around it. Also, it said yellow facing brick to match surrounding properties, but on the picture, the surrounding property is a red brick. So, you know, it's going to stand out. It's taller, it's the wrong way round. It seems like just shoved on the end of a, we've got this bit of space, we'll put this in here. And, you know, it will be overcrowding. It, it doesn't fit in there. And I, I don't know, having listened to some of the Bretons and committee, I can't see that they'd agree to this. You know, it's the wrong height. It doesn't look like the other properties around it. And that is an area where the properties look very similar to each other. And I think that's one of the considerations. When they, when somebody wants to put something up that is totally different, and this is totally different to what's around it. So, yeah, I would be against it.
Okay, thank you. John?
Chair, I've just, it may be relevant to interact to this point. Since I prepared this, there has been a highways comment put out. And when there's a sort of gap between councillor comments, I can let you know what's been said by county highways, if you wish.
So, sorry, I missed that last bit. Is there actually a comment from them yet?
Yeah, so, yeah, so since, as I said, since I've, I've done this, I've just had a look right now. And there is a new comment from County Highway. So when you'd like me to sort of go through it, I can, I can read that out for you if you like.
Actually, go ahead with that now if you've got.
Yeah, sure. Okay, so County Highways have said, it would appear the proposed dwelling is shown to utilise existing car parking provision for the, of the donor property without an allocation then being provided to address the loss to the existing. Site is located on a bend in the road where on-street car parking provision would not be desirable and result in detrimental highway safety conditions. We therefore recommend the applicant be asked to provide a revised plan which demonstrates that car parking would be provided for both the proposed and donor property to accord with adopted parking guidelines. On receipt of the initial information being provided to address the above, we will welcome the opportunity to provide additional comment.
Okay, thank you. That, that does help. Such a surprise to get an objection from highways. Very nice. John?
Yeah, I actually drove around the area and when I first went around the corner, I thought that was absolutely, under no circumstances can you actually build anything on here. Even to the extent without anything being built, there was already cars parked on the corner. And that was during the daytime. So nobody, like people home from work and all this sort of thing. So already on way on the corner, there is a car parked. So you can imagine when everybody's home from work and all the other cars, that's just going to be chock a.
Yes, thank you. Any, any others at all?
Okay, I've just had a little bit on this. Obviously, it's on, on the same estate as me. So I did go down and have a look and I thought I'd got the number on. So I thought it can't be built in there. It's too small. And when I rechecked, yeah, sure enough. So I agree with pretty much everything everybody's said. And I think that it is overdevelopment. I think although they said that they've tried to mirror the design of houses with the brick, actually, the black framed windows and everything else is in opposition. The building itself, as Mark said and Annie said, is in opposition to the building that's next to it. They haven't even removed the lead to that's in between. That looks like it's staying. It just looks like a very, very poorly thought out. And most importantly, it's massive overdevelopment. So we end up with two three-bedroom houses with one garage between them. And of those three bedrooms, there are nine beds or nine bed spaces in total. Potentially, you've got a nine vehicles there. And, and, you know, as John's already pointed out, it is already quite congested around that area. Because that state was built at a time when there was one car a family. And that isn't the case anymore. So I think on many counts, I get the feeling that we would object.
Just one quick question, sorry. I may be reading the plans wrong, but it looks like as well that they've given a garden to 31A at a cost of taking it away from 31. So when 31 ups and settles, which could potentially happen, they've just left a brand new house with no garden in an area full of lovely big gardens. Just making sure I did read that there. And it's not, I can't just, I can't read the plan. They, they've sold their garden to the new house. And then when they move and they'll say, oh, we're never going to move. No one knows what's going to happen. The new owner has no garden or push a shared garden with another house, which no other house on the street would do.
Yeah, absolutely. I think they've got, sorry, I think they've got some garden directly behind them. But not much. Everything else is at the side.
Yeah, Alex, we maybe move back to the, to one of the red and blue diagrams and then you may be able to see that.
They've just decreased the property value massively for any future, future homeowners now. They've chopped half the garden off.
Yeah, one of these will do. Yeah. So you can see, yeah, you can see the extent of the, the, the blue garden, if you like, which is 31 and the red plot being 31A.
You go down one, I'm sorry. A bit more? Down a tiny bit more, sorry? They're just not calling it in. Well, they've just massively decreased the property value for that house for, for future homeowners.
Yeah. I think things that we can oppose this on, and that's, I think, what we've got to concentrate on. And we already know that highways have said they're not happy with it. And I think we go along with that. For those points that you mentioned, Stuart, in sightlines, in the amount of vehicles that are going to be in there, the inadequate parking that's already on that estate for the extra amount of vehicles that are going to be required. The fact that it leaves 31 with no parking at all. So you potentially got a three-bedroom, three-car house that has nowhere to put its vehicles, even though most people don't use a garage, as we know. So that's the highways point. So sightlines, parking. The, the layout and density of building, which includes design, visual appearance, some finishes. So the layout and density, I think, includes the, the overdevelopment of the area. Because it massively changes the, the look of the place. And as we've already mentioned, buildings are right and there's different materials, different windows. It's going to look massively odd. But I think that the main thing that, if I lived there, if I lived in one of the houses, one of the main issues for me would be, well, now I've got another house in here with loads of extra cars. I can't see it on the corner. You know, it's what was a relatively busy street already is going to be even more difficult to navigate. Any other points I think we ought to raise? Are you happy with those? So we're going to oppose this? Okay, anything to talk?
Maybe there's a bit of anything you've said.
Good. I don't think there's anything else. Airways overshadowed lots of someone. No.
No, happy with that. Okay, Mark, thank you very much for that. Moving on.
Yep, so we'll just scroll through the, as you said, extensive plans for this again, and we're almost there. Yeah, so this is, this is one that you've seen before as a sort of sample sized one. So this now has quite a few more properties involved in it. And it's external insulation and render for flagship properties all around St Martin's Way area. So if we go down to the actual plan, so the area, as I'm sure, sure you know, and the, the picture just below there sort of kind of helpfully highlights the exact properties in question or the houses that will have this treatment. So if we could now go down to the next bend, that's just kind of typical example of houses in question showing the existing wooden render above. And if we now have a look at the, I think we've got the before and after. Oh, no, this is the description of the materials first. Yeah, that's fine. So, so this is a sort of cross section through, which shows the upper bit has a plywood timber bit and the, the insulation material on the outside there. There's a little gap to allow movement between the top half and the bottom half. The bottom half having a concrete panel substrate to fix into with the, again, with the insulated material on the outside there. So it's, it's retrofitting basically on that, on the outside of the building. So nobody's going to lose any space inside. It's fitting insulation material to the outside of all of those houses. So if we have a look at the, this is the before and after. So as I said, just like the photos you saw above, you've got this render on the ground floor and wooden cladding above on the first floor. And that will be replaced by this insulation material. I did have a good trawl round the Johnsons website to try and find what exactly what wood grey, how grey is wood grey and Aaron, but unfortunately that seems to be not easily obtained. But, so I'm afraid you'll have to leave it to your imagination to think what wood grey and Aaron will exactly look like. But if we go down to the text of the applicant's statements. So basically it describes what's there. There's only one that's different, which is number 79, which has red brick at ground level. So the EWI render is there to improve insulation and so thus reduce carbon emissions. So the top coat render, as it's said, will be Johnsons, about 90 millimetres thick. And again, with the exception of that number 79, it will be a two-tone mirroring the style of the existing. So, yeah, that's, as I said, you have seen this before on a sort of sample basis. And this is now for all those houses listed. And there's actually sort of, as I said, quite a large number of them. But they are broadly similar treatment to almost all, except one, basically. Thank you. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you, Mark. Any comments, please?
I'm fine with it. There's nothing really there. That's sort of glaringly bad. The only thing is, and I don't know if we can pass a note on sort of thing, is I've, when we've been out and about, I've spoke to quite a few residents, I know others have, about when contractors like this or our company's going to, and the amount of mess they've left in their gardens. And I mean, one man showed me his garden. I thought it was being kidnapped. But he brought me into his garden and the mess that they'd left from, from months ago. And I reported it. And just from the works where they, they ripped bits out and just left them there. So if they're going to do works, which as I said, there's nothing in here that makes me worried, I'm fine with it. Can they just please know that these are people's houses? And a sort of standard of their work to be formed would be great because the mess that they leave. And there's a couple of residents I spoke to as well, who've been out and about, who they've. they've come back and now they've got damp because the work's not been done to a good enough standard in the first place. So they've replaced it and now there's damp. Well, there wasn't damp before that, so they've got a lovely new front and they've been left with damp because of it. So if they're gonna do these sort of things, I think we need to start putting the pressure on them to do them with care and to a good enough standard. But actual application wise, yeah, I'm fine, support it, but if we could sort of send a note to Breckland, that would be read out with them there, sort of put them on the spot a bit, that would be great.
Yeah, we can do that. We we hope that they're conducted to a standard where they're not gonna damage a housing infrastructure and they're not gonna leave a mess behind, which has happened in the past. I think that's quite short. Anybody else to talk? So I think we're all quite content that that's improving the the efficiency of the houses. So for those eighteen on St Martin's Way. Those four? Four? Everybody's four? Okay, unanimous. Q? Okay, Mark, thank you. On to C.
Yep, last one from me. You already discussed this in in some detail. This has, again, come up at the previous meeting. The only thing that's really new is, before we go too far, the only thing that's really new about this is the highways comment has come through since we last looked at this. And they say, having visited the site, we have a view that the highway environment, internal parking capacity of the site is basically acceptable as long as there is that booking system such that there is no overlap of customers. So they're asking basically that to be made a condition of should Breckland wish to accept the planning application. But they're basically not objecting to it. They're just saying that as long as that condition is set into the planning application, they are happy with the application. So just to go through the plans again, especially if anyone perhaps wasn't there at the last meeting. You can see the the plot outlined in red there. It's a corner plot. And you're you're looking at it on the photo on the right from the sort of pointy bit, the top right of that red shape, showing the driveway there with the parking capacity. And on the right of the picture on the ground floor, just above where the case currently is, there is a window there and that window with the bricks around, just to the right of the front door, is the former garage, which has been converted as the massage therapy room. So if we just go through the rest of the things here, so we've got a plan there showing again, as I said, to the right of the front door, that massage therapy room. Since the last application, there has been some more detail, including a few photos added in. So if we have a look at the pictures. So the one on the left shows the hallway of the house with the door into the massage therapy room from the house. Picture on the right is the room itself. And again, just to remind you, because I really heard this earlier, the business has been running since July twenty twenty. They're saying they've not had any complaints. And it specifies there the hours of operation and the fact that there is this gap between each treatment to allow for basically, the next customer is not coming in until the previous one has gone. So you can see the picture there, again, showing the front elevation with the the yellow highlighted bit being the where that window was on the picture before, and I think that might be about it. Is that the last bit, Alan? Yep, yeah, so back to you, Chair. And as I said, once once your comments are done, that will be it for me. If you're happy for me to go, but I'll obviously hang around in case there's any questions for this application.
So over to you. Any questions at all? With that little bit of information, I get the feeling that we're all in support. So unanimous. We're unanimous in support, Mark. Thank you very much for your help again today. Much appreciated.
Thank you very much and goodbye to all. Thank you, thanks.
Okay. So one five five twenty-five, update of comments on plan to review change in use of Lion House thirty-four Old Croxton Road, converting an existing dwelling to a nursery. The decision required was to decide whether to update the council's response. So actually, what happened was we responded to the to the planning. And Sam Clark wrote a letter on half and half, which we agreed, which was quite extensive. I'm sure you've seen that now. The planning came back with their response, as did the the applicants. Now, has anybody got any comments about those those responses? You've seen them, haven't you? Okay, I missed them, so I had to read them right at the beginning. I don't know why I missed them. From my perspective, I think, I don't think it changes our opposition in any way. And as I was saying to Matt earlier, we can only really deal with how we feel about it as a planning piece rather than what we we feel personally about it. So the planning won't change. It will still be very busy down that road with all the things we talked about before. So if we're content with that, then I assume that we're still in opposition.
Agreed.
Okay, agreed. Unanimous. One four eight. One five six twenty-five, Abbey redevelopment, the outline of the planning application. So this is a review and discuss of the proposed formal response to the Abbey regeneration outline planning application. And the decision required is to agree the formal response. Now, I assume that we've seen the formal response that we provided for this. Are there any comments? Okay, if not, I have one. In some respects, I think the development of an area and the improvement of it is really important. Don't think you can forever hold things in the past. So I I welcome when people put money into areas that need it. However, having read our response and read the detail that's in there, I don't think there's any way that you can see this is a positive improvement for the lives of the people who live on that estate. I do think that its intentions might be, but it looks to me like it's more about money than it is about the support to those people. Pleasure, sir. So for that reason, I'm content with our response. I think it's a really good response, and it changed my view as I read it. Any other comments? Okay, Matt and Stuart?
Yeah, echo, you know, investing money into these areas is needed, but not at the detriment of of an infrastructure that we can't handle. And the increased houses, the reduction in green space, the we're not, a part of this deal, they've not come forward and said, we'll we'll put all these houses and we'll build you a GP surgery as well. You know, it's just they're gonna have to use everything that's already existing with all these new people. The compulsory purchases that are going to take part of this, it's gonna have lifelong impacts for a lot of the residents who currently live there. A lot of the, sad to say, a lot of the residents who have lived there for nearly all of their lives won't see the rest of their lives out in their house that they've had, which I find absolutely appalling. The other thing is, if we can sort of agree as a committee, at Breckland, the the MP is going to be allowed to speak. Mike, as the Breckland council, would have to speak. And can we elect as a committee now a town council to speak on behalf of the town council side of it? And if I make the post who, just Terry, only because he's the ward rep. And I think it'd be rude if anyone sort of superseded you for that sort of position.
Thank you. Thanks very much. I'd be happy to say. I don't know as long as it all works with the residents.
Yes, so there'd be spoken to at all levels from a town council point of view, a Breckland point of view, and then from the MP as well.
So I think this is quite important. It's something we've discussed for a long time about our opinions on planning. If they're strong enough, we need to go to Breckland and voice them because our responses don't always carry the weight that it does when you're physically there. So I'm delighted that you suggested that. It was a great idea. Ward rep is the ideal person to do it. Unless there's any other points?
Unfortunately, that's not part of the agenda right now, so not the resolution is noted. But it's, you know, from a legality perspective, theoretically, you know, it's a suggestion, not a resolution. Now I can make that point, and then we just keep legal from the from the meeting perspective.
It's just a point from some of the figures that there's only yeah, there'll only be twenty-five percent affordable housing. And only six additional affordable houses to be provided for each year of plan development. I mean, we need more affordable housing. That's not meeting the need, local need. What are all the other houses going to be then?
A lot of them on the riverside will be four or five-bedroom houses that make flagship bulk of a lot of money, that's my sense.
That's that's not improving the area.
No, it's not. It's absolutely not. And I don't see anywhere where that's the intention. I mean, I think I'm kind of preaching to convert a bit here, and I've said it always before. But removing everyone's garage for commercial value of homes, to industrial quality of homes, and will provide a parking solution, I'll undertake matters to be worse. And there are very few improved parking spaces despite the fact that there'll be around four hundred further homes.
I mean, I'd be happy for the money to go in to improve what is there already. That would have been a start, but to not improve it and and take homes away, just doesn't seem right.
And that, I think, is evidence that of what Max said and I said about the actual reason for this development, which isn't about improving the site. One of the comments we've often had in this committee about that particular estate is the poor parking facility. And that's why there's fans all over grass areas because it was built a long time ago before everybody had vehicles. Removing the garages is not going to help that one jot. Please, you've already raised objections around antisocial behaviour. There's also an issue down the line when it comes to providing charging for electric vehicles. People won't be able to do that from their own houses necessarily. They'll be reliant on charges in the middle of these new parking arcades with no idea who will own them, who will run them, who will rest it. So it's not mentioned in here, but it, one of the things it kind of looks like is the gentrification of an area that they're trying to take to somewhere else. They're not actually trying to improve it for those residents, is the way I read it. Because of the lack of, you know, affordable housing, et cetera. So if we're content, we all agree that that's a good response. Proposal, please. Terry and Secunder. Matt? Thank you. All those on the bridge? Okay, one five seven twenty-five, any decisions of variance? None? One five eight twenty-five, items to be referred to greater set of partnership. So I do look at the the two councillors for this. I've got one question really, how does this work? Because often we have anything to refer and we all go, no.
So if I may, where we have picked things up, or in your phrase, the committee doesn't leave very often, so three, six month thing, we've got one coming up. Sometimes we'll pick up things in these following meetings, which we would have a burning desire to, and we would ask the GTP to either consider it on their next agenda or give us a response or activate something. So the likes of the plans for Kingsfield, we've invited them along. So there is just a mechanism of being able to tap into these, which could be either via the reps or it could be directly to what the board has asked and then consider them on next meeting. In the past, we've had a number of bits of pieces, but obviously the key thing is the plans as Kingsfield developed, we talked about street lighting, which is one of the things that, you know, we but in the last presentation, I think Alan was present, we had there, it's very much retrofit isn't allowed and too late with the, you might get it, so the power stuff. But even Matt, you've got a final piece of land to bolt your street by two weeks at the moment. They're not considering. So there are things with the new plans which we need to get into, but we've had that association from Vigi. But if there are other matters that we think, because it is the growth that the partnership, the idea being, it was not just Kingsfield, it was the knock on the interaction with the whole on the tennis happening, everything is just concentrated. And I believe well, I've attended, unwind things with their green infrastructure type person, start talking to them, show how to supply anything for that. I'm only engaged to look at the things within the Kingsfield site, not interact with the rest of things. So we keep battling on in those things, but it's not a the break, it's a handle that was given to it to allow the lights of the crops and themselves to be part of the board, we should say, and it's all talked about there, but we don't have a greater move on.
Yeah, sad. I know that you do a talk back to the full council on what's come out of those meetings. I wonder if it would be of any benefit that we also add that into this meeting. So after your next one with GTP, come back and let us know what the flavour of the moment is so that we can sort of adjust our thinking as well. Because I think there is, it does feel to me that last time they had a briefing at the grammar school for the business breakfast, I went to that and I did challenge them again on building quality and the style of building and all that, it could have been from anywhere. And and it did feel like they wanted to listen. So I think if we bang on about it enough, you know, it may not happen now, but in phase two, phase three, this might be something that's included. But having the the feeling of what they're thinking would help, I think, this group.
Yeah, echo, I think they were appreciative of some objective criticism, and they went back and how much they hadn't used through all that, but I think they did appreciate that it was worth the importance of those persons.
Yeah. And while we're on great set for partnership, I'd be really interested to know what their plans are with vehicle access from the the future light industry area up on the white line side of Norwich Road. So from what we understand, the plan is no vehicles will turn right out there to go to the roundabout. So they will travel left all the way down to the Norwich Road, turn around around about there and come all the way back up. We have a couple of issues about this. So that that is bizarre. And apparently, the slip road that comes out of the the development now, they've got the same rule in that they only go left. So, you know, this this is just adding more and more to the journeys. If the roads are in the wrong place and you can't pull out, the roads have been badly designed, let's not send people all the way through. Because that could be potentially very, very difficult. Tiny little mini roundabout at Cloverfields, you know, an already busy one, yeah. We've all the situation on London Road with the 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 estate by Greg's, et cetera. You know, he's got one little rose that needed to be better, didn't it? Yeah. That's the sort of, that sort of thing. Once it's done, you don't get a remedy very often. And of course, the whole of Cloverfields uses the schools on the other side of the road. So all those children cross across there, they're not driven by their parents. You end up going down a road with a set of traffic lights on them, so there's a pedestrian crossing, that's gonna add to the the weight for them and the roundabout. So they said that they'd had a reply from highways and highways were content, and this is why I'm surprised that highways has objected some of our stuff. So if you could give us an answer on that, that would be really good. See where they go with it. Okay, I've talked enough, unless there's anything else on that. Except for one five nine twenty-five, progress of actions?
I think following on from the meeting that Stuart mentioned that we went to, they actually, they had some homes come and do, their next ordinary meeting, and they had some homes come in and do the presentation. It was actually very interesting. Had a lot of the plans of where they're putting things. It was actually very interesting. Had a lot of the plans of where they're putting things. Uh, and we thought afterwards it would be very useful to bring it to the planning committee. So it's gone on the action, because I started that process. Uh, I thought I'd just go to Pigeon and they would organise the, organise all the developers, but apparently that's not quite hard work. So I had to go approach all the developers and see if we can get them in. But I think it was really interesting to talk about the bus streets, talk about chat flows, talk about, um, 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 affordable housing, where they were putting it, uh, uh, so it was very useful. I think the question, the presentation itself. I know this is a big quarter, I shouldn't say, but I didn't find the presentation that stimulating, but the debate afterwards was exceptionally stimulating, you know, a lot of questions. And the other thing that made it very interesting is they had a lady from the infrastructure part of Norfolk County Council. And she was very informative, you know, so she was telling, the question was asked about retrospective fitting of, of the street lighting, for example. And she was one, you know, was quite, we don't do it, you know, and this is how we plan certain things. So it was very interesting from that perspective. So we just thought it'd be interesting to have a separate meeting. And also there's a catch up meeting from the early in the year. We had Matt, the councillor still, sorry. Uh, we, we had some engagement with Pigeon, just to see if we can progress those and see how, you know, whether there's anything else that needs to happen from that. So that's really what that action plan is about.
Good. Yeah, that's, that sounds really positive. I, I am aware that when they do come and do the presentations, they put up those massive uh, PowerPoint picture of what the estate's gonna look like. And then they take that one off and put the next one up and saying, these are the changes. And you can't work, you, you couldn't work it out if you had a degree in, in map changes. So, um, I think they do try. I don't think they intentionally try and back you, but it is very, they're looking. Anyway, that's it. I think we're done for the evening. Thank you very much, everyone.